Good evening, everyone. My name is David Frieson, the mayor of Tongonoxie. Mr. Porter, we call the roll, please.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mayor Fries.
Here.
Ms. Stevens is absent, mayor.
All right, thank you. Would you stand and join us in the pledge? Consent agenda. Anybody have anything to say about the bill payments? Maybe the minutes, sorry, minutes come first. Do they have anything to say about the minutes?
Make a motion and we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Great. Now, on to reviewing bill payments. Does anyone have anything to say about the bill payments?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, folks. Moving on to old business, there is none. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up to speak to the council tonight?
No signups tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Consider recommendations to fill vacancies on the Tongonoxie Planning Commission. George?
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Brackovich, sorry.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So, this item, we're pleased to bring back before you, as you probably recall, we had fairly recent conversations about when Ms. McCutcheon was selected to come to the city council. It left a vacancy on the planning commission that we've been trying to fill since January. We came back to the city council in February to kind of talk about the somewhat lack of interest, or lack of applicants, I should say, in filling that, and so we appreciate all the efforts everyone put into getting an increase in the number of applicants. So, we did end up with three total applicants, and we asked those applicants to attend the last planning commission meeting, where planning commission, as has been the process the last few times, has a chance to vet the candidates, talk, you know, interview them, ask questions, hear about their qualifications, hear about their interest in the position, and then ultimately forward a recommendation to the city council, where under the city code, it's the mayor's appointment with the consent of the governing body. And so, so we've done that, and Amanda Horner was the top candidate that the planning commission had recommended. So, and she's here tonight to answer any questions. One additional caveat is we have two positions that are, their terms are expiring. One is a city position, and one is a county position. So, the county position is Ms. Gee's position. She's indicated interest in being, seeking reappointment to that. The city position is Crystal Henson, and she notified staff previously, and then let the planning commission know during the meeting that she was not interested in seeking reappointment. So, as you probably recall, when we redid the bylaws of the planning commission, those terms end in May, and new terms begin in June. So, one of the things that we threw out for consideration during the planning commission meeting is, I know we advertised for the one open spot we have now, but we know it took nearly three months to get quality applicants. All three applicants were well received and were more than qualified, and so the discussion turned to, for the one city posi-, city appointment that was not seeking reappointment, did it make sense to forward a recommendation to the city council that when that expires in May, there is a candidate out of this pool that would be eligible and ready to go in June? And so, the planning commission had a discussion on that, and they did decide to forward that candidate as well. Her name is Angela Schultz. So, that is an additional consideration item tonight, if you're willing to accept the recommendation of the planning commission for that additional appointment that wouldn't happen until the June meeting. And for Ms. Gee's interest in reappointment, is that acceptable, or do you want to direct staff to do something different, like go advertise for that? And again, there's requirements for those county positions in terms of how, what kind of proximity they have to be into the city limits. So, I know I said a mouthful, but we'd be happy to, staff would be happy to answer any additional questions, or if you'd like to talk to, or meet Amanda Horner, and have her indicate what her interest is in the position. I'm sure she'd be thrilled to do that, and then we can go from there.
Ms. Horner, I'd love to hear from you. If you don't mind standing at the podium, give us your address and your name, and...
Yes, my name is Amanda Horner. My address is 2170 Rock Creek Drive, here in Tongonoxie, if I could say it. My interest is, I currently work for Mid-America Regional Council as a safety transportation planner. So, that kind of speaks for itself a little bit there. My special interest, my, for example, my husband and I are frequent flyers on the trail system in Tongonoxie, and I would love to see that expanded. Generally speaking, I am passionate about safety, particularly in transportation, and having safe transportation for all road users, so pedestrian, bicyclists, vehicles, all types.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Ms. Horner. Counsel, do you have any questions for?
Thanks for flying.
Of course.
Absolutely. Ms. Gee, you can have a seat now. Thank you. Ms. Gee, do you want to address why you want to be back on the board?
I was just elected to be the chairperson of Planning and Zoning. I feel like I've contributed, and I feel like I attend every meeting, which I have, I don't think I've ever missed. But more importantly, you, everyone up there knows my passion for our community and seeing it grow properly. So, I'd be happy to answer anybody's questions.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Ms. Gee.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, counsel, it would be my preference just to take care of it all tonight. I want to be efficient and effective, but I understand that second position, that may not be what everybody else wants to do, so if anybody has any discussions or objections to that, let's hear them now. Okay, great. Then, did you have something, Chris?
No, I think we have good candidates, and it's been difficult to get them. I don't think we should let them get away.
I agree. Okay, does this take a motion, Mr. Porter, or do I just appoint them and ask for a vote?
Mayor, you request to appoint the people you'd like to request, and those motions are in your agenda packet, and then the council takes a vote to indicate their consent with your appointment.
Okay, then, it would be in my intent to appoint Ms. Horner, Ms. Schultz, and reappoint Ms. Gee. Does anybody, did you ask, there's a motion to that?
I would make a motion that we accept the appoint, the two appointments, including the one in, later in the year, as well as the reappointment of Monica Gee for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Great. You're stuck, you can't get away. All right, moving on to item B. Consider approval of proposal to reapply to the Army Corps of Engineers for an updated jurisdictional determination. Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, Mayor. So, this item is, relates to the Tongonoxie Business Park. Before we could move forward with our mass grading project at the park, there was a review, that review started prior to my employment, but my understanding of looking at the historical documents on this, there was some consideration given because if you look at historical photos, that was tip, it was cropland, going all the way back to the 1940s. The Leavenworth County GIS Department has aerial overlays you can do to see, and it goes back to 45, is that the one, from 1945? So, Dan's got that on display now, and as you go through time, so they've overlaid what we've platted in the park between the road and the lots that are available. And as you go through time, you can see there's really not a stream indicated on this property. But what happened is, and what year is that, Dan, 91 maybe? Yep. So, you can see over time, the ditches that were created because of stormwater runoff in those crop fields kind of follow the natural elevation. So, basically, fast forward to 2017, when we're making application, there was a determination made that this met the definition of, kind of a broad definition of headwaters in a wetland situation. If we expanded that photo out, you could see that in the topography, if you're not familiar with it, it all falls towards Kansas Avenue. And so, we've reserved where the cursor is now, that's a very large detention basin easement, so that, and there's a weir that we constructed there, that KDHE sent their engineers out because it was the first of its kind in the state of Kansas, or they had never seen one before. And so, that detention basin easement and that weir still accounts for all the storm water that ends up being generated from the site, and goes to that area. But if you're looking for a stream, or where this would be a headwater for, you can see the two sewage ponds for the trailer park development, and then the larger pond, yes, to the right there, that is sort of private property. There's not really a defined stream. So, fast forward to April of 2020, the EPA and the Department of the Army redefined, or recreated definitions in four broad categories, and those definitions gave a more favorable interpretation for us. And why, I guess one of the other things I should have mentioned, in 2017, when we applied for what's called a 404 permit, we actually had to go by mitigation credits because of where the, we put in Industrial Park Drive, the road, crossed 0.4 acres of what they defined as wetlands. And in order to do that, the city had to pay federal tax credit amount of $24,200 to just cross the road there. So, there is both a financial benefit to doing this, as well as a marketability, if these new definitions could be an advantage to us and allow us to remove that wetland delineation. GBA has submitted a proposal because they also represented another business park in a similar situation, and did get a favorable interpretation from the Army Corps of Engineers, and so they've approached us. We've had a chance to review it, we've submitted it to the city engineer. We feel that the scope that's proposed and the price are both very acceptable scope, acceptable price, and we think it's, it would be in our benefit to move forward with this. And the timeframe seems to be about, once the report's done, and GBA already has a lot of the electronic files, because they did the submittal for us in 2017, we think that it'll take up to 60 days, excuse me, for the Corps to review that and give us a finding back. So, from staff recommendation is to move forward with this. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Any questions, counsel? Seeing none, is there a motion?
We're just approving the GBA bill.
Yes, so it's an amount not to exceed. Yes.
I would make a motion that we accept a GBA proposal to assist the city with the industrial park environmental consulting, environmental consulting services for the industrial park, not to exceed $4,500.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. It's been moved and seconded. Try a voice vote on it. Do you have, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C. Consider waiver of pet licensing fee requirement for participants in a vaccination clinic scheduled for May 8, 2021. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item may look familiar to those on the city council back in 2019 and 2018. So, in those two years, the city fielded a request from, initially from Monica Gee and her group, working on a leadership project, but then later from the help of the organization Tongonoxie Business Association. And it's involving a clinic that they have offered in the local community each of those two years, in the month of April or May, roughly. And in order to help incentivize participation in this vaccination and microchipping clinic, we're able to, as the city, waive the pet fees that would typically be charged to license your pet if you can prove or have a voucher that says you attended this clinic and participated. So, some of the goals that the city takes from this sort of an event is obviously the public safety enhancement of more vaccinated animals and pets. And second, when we have microchipping and a registration current for new pets in the community, it helps us identify at a low cost and a quick return any animals that wander off or are lost. So, there are a couple of upsides to the city, which are of course the reason why we have a registration and licensing program here at the city. The fees that are being requested to be waived are fairly negligible in the city's general fund, about $3.6 million in revenue, and we budget about $1,200 from these license fees. We did an analysis based on 2018 and 2019, and think that there's probably a $200 to $500 range that could be waived through this action of the council if you so choose. And so, it doesn't present a negative financial impact in the grand scheme of things, and it does help support an event that this group is proposing to host in the conjunction with Hope Clinic, and Dr. Jennifer Simon, I believe, has also agreed to participate this year. So, staff would recommend the city council consider and approve this waiver if you so choose. The event this year is held a little later than usual due to scheduling constraints. So, instead of happening during April, it's going to be scheduled for May 8, I believe. And I'm sure Monica would be happy to answer any questions if you have those about an event.
Go ahead, Ms. Gee.
I, if anybody has questions, I can answer it.
Is the participation pretty good from the public?
We've been between 100 and 120, which is considerable amount. And when we do this, we also make sure pets, if they're not neutered or spayed, they have a voucher to go get that done free with Hope Clinic. And then, we're going to work, Dr. Simon with Pleasant Valley Vet, and myself have been in contact with Dan about trying to do some sort of feral cat spay neuter as well, so that might be something we can do in conjunction, or extend this event in that purpose only. So...
I think it's, I think it's worth mentioning that this whole program or event came from your participation in the Southern Leavenworth County Leadership Program.
Correct.
And I think this, your event is the only project that has continued like this for several years.
Yes, and we had already had it all set for last year, but COVID canceled that, so that's why we didn't do it last year.
So, I think it's, I think it's extremely impressive, and thank you for continuing that, the legacy of the event.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Gee, how much would it hurt your event for the city to waive fees from April 1 until that event, for anyone?
It wouldn't hurt us at all. It's just the benefit of, we usually have it in May, or not May, April, when you guys do half price. And since we couldn't get it scheduled and coincide with everybody until May, we just wanted to extend that. And do I think it would really hurt it? No. But I do think if people came and lived in the city, they would never come up and get their vaccinations, or get their tag. That's where I think it would be, the difference.
This, as proposed, is the motivator for people to attend your event.
I mean, it is the motivator, because then they don't have to go to the city hall and do, it's not hard to do it, but getting that one extra step.
So, I guess my idea for this is to, is to just waive fees all of April up to the event, probably take a bigger loss, but it gets more pets registered, it gets more pets tagged, and that's really what we really want.
Right.
And at that point, I mean, if they come in to get the tags, we can tell them about the event if their pet isn't spayed or neutered, correct?
Correct.
So, I'm just going to throw that out there, but I think it would be a good thing to get more pets tagged and what have you, but it's up to you guys.
Our goal is the microchipping. I mean, that's the end goal.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Gee.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion, counsel? Is there a motion?
I will make the motion to authorize the waiver of pet license fees in conjunction with a rabies and microchipping event to be held on May 8, 2021.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, could I clarify? You, you mentioned earlier, expanding the waiver from April 1 to the event. Ms. McCutcheon, do you want to include that, or keep it just the event?
No, we can expand that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it is from April 1 until the day of the event. Okay. Your motion still stands? Your second still stand? All right. Mr. Porter, will you take a roll call vote on this?
Certainly. Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
All ayes, mayor, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter, and thank you, counsel. I appreciate that. Item D. Consider approval of request to donate Tongonoxie Water Park Family Season Pass Genesis Christian Preschool and Academy. Mr. Porter?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is also an item that members of the city council may recall from previous years. I spoke with Denise Bixby with Genesis Schools earlier today, and she regret, offered her regrets that she couldn't attend tonight with a family health issue to take care of. She was unavailable, so I offered to introduce her request and try to answer your questions if you have any. This item is something, again, that the city has provided for the Night of Nights Annual Fundraiser Event many years, until 2020. With COVID, they were not able to hold that fundraiser, which typically occurs in April or May, and thus didn't use or need to ask for the city's donated pool pass like they typically have. The value that they're asking for is equivalent of a resident season pass, which is $140 according to our fee schedule. They auctioned it off as part of their event, and have, have really appreciated, in the words of Denise, that support over the years from the city for their fundraising efforts. We typically have fielded their request and one other from St. John's School in Lawrence, but so far to date this year, we haven't heard anything from, from that entity yet. Overall, again, negligible budget impact, about $140 lost through this donation or waiver. One thing I'd like to point out, though, is obviously, this, this year is a unique circumstance with the operation of the water park. And so, I made it clear with Denise that if the city council were to grant this approval, we would also ask that they clearly state it's dependent entirely upon the operation of the water park, and the city wouldn't be liable for any refund or reimbursement. Should we open part of the season, not the entire season, have limited hours, you know, whatever operational changes would occur, this donation would be subject to those in full and not reimbursable, and she totally understood that. So, that's about the only other information I have, unless you have any specific questions. Happy to help.
Any questions, counsel? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the waiver of the $140 water park residential family pass fee for Genesis Christian Academy for the upcoming annual season.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to city manager agenda. Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, mayor. We have one item tonight. It's the financial report, and I'll ask Mr. Porter to cover that.
Thank you, George. On your dais, as well as on the city website, we've added the financial report to the agenda packet for reference. You'll probably note that this report looks pretty different than what you're traditionally accustomed to seeing in our monthly financials. This change in format was really intended as, as an attempt to bring a different approach early in the fiscal year. We're only two months in with actuals as of the end of February, and that's only about 17% of the city's fiscal year. So, what this report aimed to do is give the city council a good overview of our major revenue sources, and in addition to some trends in those, also highlight, near the end of the report, a listing of the 2021 budget initiatives that are approved in last summer's adopted budget for 2021 fiscal and calendar year. So, if there are any questions about the format, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. I'll briefly go through it, and then also have a chance at the end to answer any questions. Page one of the report isolates a few major happenings in the early fiscal year. In addition to our spring 2021 debt principal and interest payments, we've also had some activity involving the 2021A series of temp notes for the Interceptor Sewer Project. The city did receive the wires for the remainder of those outstanding funds. And so, now with the county's grant funding and those funds in hand, we're prepared to pay all of the obligations of the sewer project as it progresses. You've probably noticed and understood that over the last couple of weeks, there's been some land clearing of vegetation, some stockpiling of the major assets for that infrastructure along the first part of the installation path, and so we anticipate some significant pay apps to come from the contractor in the next several months, and start utilizing all of that funding. We also would want to point out that there are ongoing discussions and information coming in about the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the latest round of federally sourced stimulus funding. We have high hopes for this round and the flexibility it will offer the city to utilize a share of the local government aid, because we understand that it's intended to come across with less restriction from entities like the county or the state between us and the federal government. We should be more direct funded and given the funds in a very timely fashion, which would be a different process than what we experienced with the CARES Act in a lot of, in a lot of ways. So, as we learn more, we'll be prepared to share that at upcoming city council meetings, so you all can have a good opportunity to make policy decisions about how to handle and distribute those funds according to the allowed uses, which we don't yet know. So, that's the other thing we wait with great anticipation for is clear direction from the Treasury Department, which has not yet arrived. Page two of the financial report begins to isolate some of the most critical revenues for the city. So, the property tax at the top of the page is 43% of general fund revenues in the, in the 2021 budget, and 65% of the debt service fund revenue. So, we've received the first two remittances, which comprise a little under 53% of our annual budgeted levels of revenue. That's a little bit advanced compared to the last two years at the same time, so we're in hope that there's a low level of delinquency on property tax payments. That we'll know a lot more by the remittance in May, which is the second largest remittance of the year, after the January payment we receive. Sales and use tax, 16% of general fund revenue, 89% of our capital projects fund, and 100% of the 3/4 cent infrastructure sales tax fund. We've gotten two months of remittances, and with 10 remaining, we are at a really good position trend-wise compared to last year. It's, it's important to remember, too, when looking at last year, the January and February remittances were really the November and December actuals, if you can think of it that way, collections and activity at businesses. And so, both last year's months reflected pre-COVID entirely. Both of this year's January and February remittances reflect the middle of COVID, and one could argue, still a very dire time in our economic circumstances. Our sales and use tax proceeds for the city limits sales tax collection and use tax have gone up by 13% year over year, and our share of the county sales tax have gone up by 4% compared to last year. So, that's really promising, and it reflects a trend we've seen and we've talked about in previous financial discussions of changes in purchasing preferences, the strength of our local commercial establishments during the pandemic conditions, and some of the trends that we've noticed of communities with larger retail bases and brick and mortar stores, maybe than we have, suffering while places with larger residential populations at the same time see more spending, see more... see more spending, see more deliveries, have local businesses that stay open and do a lot to offer their customers things they can get here without traveling to major retail centers somewhere else. So very promising results and, and nothing to indicate a downward trend, which is fairly incredible when you consider the times we're, we're in right now. Building permit activity is the next item listed, and this year to date through two months, we've received over 39% of our general fund revenue assumptions. The last two years, we've had really good activity, and some of that's attributable to a 32-unit development at Schoolyard Town Homes in 2029, in 2020, excuse me. But we've also had, as you can see from the chart, a really strong level of performance in other or miscellaneous building permit types. So 129 in 2019, 159 in 2020, and then 19 so far this year through the coldest, you would argue, winter months of the year. So strong levels of activity, a mix of single-family duplex, and again, our multifamily project that was initiated last year and is getting closer and closer to completion. So that's the major revenue overview. Are there any questions about that before I move forward?
Yeah, I would like to see, question one would be the, the city's portion of the county sales tax, infrastructure sale tax fund. You said we were over by 13%, I believe is what you said?
For the city-only collections and use tax.
So we're over 13%, and would you project what we would be at? I understand it's a long way off to the end of the budget cycle, but.
Sure.
I would like to see that, I'd like to see that number specific in here to show what you're, where we are at, and then what staff thoughts are about where we're going, where it's going. I think it would give us a better road gauge as we vote on things to spend money on of where we're at. Does that make sense?
Certainly, yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Donnelly, I also think this trend is something we're going to need to really focus on when we develop 2022 budget assumptions. We've been extremely conservative in, in a purposeful sense, but obviously two years starts to become, instead of a trend or a tick, a new normal. And so definitely that's something we'll look at a lot more closely, also building next year's budget too.
Well, the sales tax, we're seeing a benefit of people shopping from home, and will that continue or not, I would, I don't know, who knows?
Yeah.
I expect some level of it will, but also when this thing reopens back up, will we see a decline? And then we'll be out spending money that we think we're going to get that we don't get. So I think I would like to see that where we're at as a percentage of budget, and then where it's, where you believe it might go, and may, may trend based on what information you're seeing from whoever, the league or whoever would send you financial data.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
We've got more pages, right, Dan?
We do, yes, Mayor. Moving to page three. This is a beginning of our 2021 Budget Initiatives Tracker. This is largely the same information in slightly different format from what's in the 2021 Adopted Budget Book that's on the city website. This, though, differentiates the initiatives that are sort of unique to this year and have major funding sources attributable to them. So it's organized in a split fashion between sales tax-funded projects, general fund-funded projects, utility fund-funded projects, and the Public Safety Capital Fund projects. It's sort of a checklist format, so you can see next to the items that the City Council has already considered, awarded. We may not have finished the project and paid the bill, but it's well underway and, and initiated. Those are marked with the X next to them. So you can see, like, out of the sales tax proceeds projects, we've awarded the bid for the police station roof and siding. We did have a savings on that project, but that's just an idea of both what's been previously approved and then what's yet to come to the remainder of this fiscal year. Subject, of course, to if there are any budget amendments to add or change initiatives on this, on this list. I won't go through each of them in detail, but I would encourage you, if you have any questions now, or also between now and the next meeting, George or I would be happy to discuss those with you, and hopefully this will be a useful tool for us to monitor how we track on initiatives before the end of the year.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And then finally, the last page of our report, page four, isolates the timeline for our 2022 budget development. It seems crazy in March to already be worrying about next year, but unfortunately, that's, that's where we are today. And we'll begin with the spring retreat and then early discussions for the capital maintenance and improvements plan later in May. So stay tuned for that, be thinking about those things as we get closer. And again, if you have questions or comments, feel free to share them with George or I at any time, so we can help get ready for those upcoming discussions this year. And that's the conclusion of my report, Mayor. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Anyone have questions? Okay, we'll move on to the City Attorney Agenda. Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Agenda?
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, okay. I don't have anything other than the executive session. Ms. Stevens?
I move that the, I move that the City Council recess into executive session for a preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property for utilities at the Tongonoxi Business Park pursuant to KSA 75-43119B6. The opening meeting will resume in the City Council Chamber at 7:46. The executive session will include city, the city attorney, city manager, and assistant city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See you in a few.
No binding was taken in the executive session.
That's correct, no binding. I don't have anything else, so I will entertain a motion. Do you have something, Mr. Brackovich?
I'm sorry, just one item, since Ms. Gee is here. She was kind enough in the past to donate a couple of pieces of artwork that came from the Plain Air Art Festival. So we've hung one picture over there and has a little plaque that recognizes, and thanks, Ms. Gee, for the donation. There's another in the executive session room. And then we had a Chief Tongonoxi plate that was donated by some member of the Lansing City Council, name to be determined. It came from the Lansing City Manager down to us. So I wanted to acknowledge that and give everyone a chance to go take a look at it if they wanted to tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.